Live then?
We are live.
Okay. I'd like to call the Meeker County Board of Commissioners' regular session Tuesday, June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, to order. Please stand and join me with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to make comment today? Hearing none, we will move on. Andrew, is there any additions or corrections?
None today, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Would look for a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Oberg. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carries. Andrew, if you would run the consent agenda, please.
Yes, today we have approval of the board meeting minutes from June third. Approval of the Health and Human Services County and Hospital Accounts Payable. Approval of replacement of UPS for the Law Enforcement Center. Approval of a joint powers agreement at the state of Minnesota regarding work release inmates. Reappointment of park board members. And that is the consent agenda.
Okay, are there any questions from anything on the consent agenda, or does someone wish to have an item moved to the full agenda?
I just have a quick question on the law enforcement, the, the, goodness, the work contract.
Yes.
So, it's seventy-five dollars?
Yes.
I understood a couple of years ago when we had this discussion, it was going to be raised.
It was actually lower previously.
Oh my.
I think at like sixty dollars is what the sheriff had said. So this is an increase in that.
I thought that was after the seventy-five. It's not a very good increase, though.
That is the increase.
I misunderstood, then.
Okay, is that clear? Your question up?
Not really, but I'll let it go.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move to consent agenda, Mr. Chair, as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner.
You know, it's both.
I apologize. Any further discussion?
What did he say? What did you say, Steve?
I heard nothing.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carries. Phil, are you really sure you want to come up here tonight?
We generally meet in the morning.
I think I prefer morning meetings. Good afternoon. What item for consideration today? Ditch related, actually, so we need to recess?
Yes, recess and reconveniences.
Sorry, I forgot to put that in there.
Do I start, or?
No, yeah, we're the ditch authority, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So we are the ditch authority now?
It is.
So, I'm looking for approval of an inspection report and direction to MINDAT to replace culverts, two culverts turning into one under Trunk Highway twenty-two on County Ditch twelve. So, MINDAT identified holes in their pavement on Trunk Highway twenty-two. Related to our county ditch, they have failing culverts, want to replace them. They want direction from the Drainage Authority, basically, to tell them to do it, part of their legal process. I did interact with Rinky Noonan just to ask about best practice on this, and this is what they recommended. I looked at it, completed a brief inspection report, and then I'm looking for a motion to approve the inspection report that I prepared and direct MINDAT to replace the culvert, culverts. There should be no cost to the county, no cost to the ditch system.
Questions for Phil?
Mr. Chair, if I may, Phil, so the fifty-four inch culvert that we're going to replace two thirties with, is that for your recommendation or Rinky Noonan's, or is that a?
MINDAT's.
It's MINDAT's, okay, that's their specs, or what they're calling, and it increases, actually, I think it was increase.
Opening size increases, you'll have a.
Yeah, it's not a one.
Better low-flow capacity, you know, but the opening size itself is bigger, if you just look at that.
Yes, yes. I was just wondering who came up with that spec, but, and then, do we know them culverts you inspected? What's down there?
I looked at them, it wasn't thorough. I know they're in rough shape, separations are causing the road to go into the pipe right now.
And do we know when they're looking at a timeline?
Soon, that's why I'm here.
Okay, good.
Otherwise, I'm going to wait for a morning meeting.
Will you get a, will you get, will you get a opportunity to, like, how big a heads up do you get on something like that when they're going to close that roadway? Any idea? I mean.
I don't know.
Okay.
You know, I'm really not sure how they plan to execute the work.
Okay, okay.
But I'll share when I know that they plan to close their highway.
Okay.
There shouldn't be a closure on the township road, I don't think, just the trunk highway.
It should be just north of the township road there. It definitely, I mean, it is bad there. I mean, I just drove through it.
And it's a little bit hodgepodge, because they've already had a failure of the other pipe, which they put a liner in, which actually did reduce the capacity some, because it's a smaller liner than the thirty-inch.
Okay.
So this will bring it back to original or slightly better.
Yep. And I think that road was put in in fifty-five. So, I mean, and pipe were original, I'm sure, yet, so they're due to be replaced. All right, I don't have any more questions on that.
Other question?
No. My, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the inspection report and direct MINDAT to complete the TH twenty-two and CD twelve culvert replacement.
Motion by Commissioner Van Orde. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt. Is there any further discussion? I have a question, Phil. If they close twenty-two down, will it be a day or two, or even more than that?
I would expect a day is possible, but I'd plan for two or three days.
And this is just my curiosity. Do they inform the emergency services, so like if there was an ambulance call, that you would know it'll be reroute?
Usually Steph, Steph Emergency Management gets notified on a lot, like a county work, I know she does.
Yeah.
And she'll put out a, to her chiefs or whatnot, so.
That was just more my curiosity, is to, you know, because in the event of an emergency, you guys come along.
You gotta know which way to, how to get where you're going, yes. No, we, we monitor that. As responders too, I mean, we try and monitor what's going on.
Anytime we close a county road to the point where it's impassable, we always coordinate with emergency services. I can't speak to MINDAT's process, like what their notification is when they close their road. But I expect they do.
Do we have an update on three, when they plan to start service?
Nothing per, per contract after July, but I'm expecting later, later construction season, maybe more like that August, September timeframe.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking care of that other issue down on Danielson.
It's not taken care of, yeah. Just looked at it.
I know, but thank you. We will recess as the County Ditch Authority and reconvene as the.
County Board.
County Board. Evening, Greg.
Evening. Greg Schultz Land Use Director, tonight I've got two items for your consideration. First one is a initial use permit for landscaping project on Lake Francis. This is a property owned by Wayne and Deborah Seplet. Section twelve, Township one twenty, Range twenty, Kingston Township, Lake Francis, parcel number one three zero four eight three zero zero zero. And what they're looking on doing is they're looking at doing a construction erosion stabilization project along their shoreline in order to stop erosion of the site. Other plans out of the site, they're planning on increasing their driveway, creating a driveway from their property to the township road. Total materials for this project could be approximately a hundred and twenty cubic yards. One of the question that came up during this CUP was who owns, who has control of the property between the township road and their property line? You see on the picture on the right-hand side, the cars parked, that is about the end of the actual platted parcel for the Seplets, and the township road is about thirty feet away from where it was originally planted. So the question came up to the township, township actually brought it up, whether they were going to grant the Seplets to put gravel, or anytime they want to do concrete or batuminous between the township road and the Seplets property to make that transition from the township road to their property. I got notification from Kingston Township that they were not willing to let them put hard pack, such as concrete or batuminous, but they were, are willing to allow them to put Class Five between the township road and their actual property. This plat was created in about nineteen fifty-six, and since then, the road has shifted about thirty feet from the, from the time period till now, so. It's not only their property, it's the property of the west, it's the property of the east, they all got this kind of no man's land between what actually is considered the township road and where actually their property is, so. That was the agreement, those Kingston Township wanted to see, nothing per, would allow gravel or Class Five in case the road somehow shifted in the future to the actual property line. That was actually platted nineteen fifty-six.
If the road has shifted, is it on the plat across the road, is the road on someone else's property?
It's agriculture land.
Thank you.
Next lot over, you see that white shed, that's the next plat over, that's actually the right county line.
Okay.
The telephone, that telephone line is, pole is to the right there, that's like the right county line.
Okay.
Interesting.
Yeah.
I didn't know.
So is that on the, on the actual plat? Is that property line is not the right county line, though? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, the telephone pole is the one.
The one on the picture, the pole is.
Yep, and the plat is the Seplets, what I have on the picture on the left is the Seplets property.
Yep.
Where it says terrace, that's the last plat that goes to right county, the next one over. Next one to the east, yep, is right county.
One plat away from.
One plat away, exactly.
So, is the shed right county or Meeker?
That is in Meeker County.
It is.
Wow, not by much.
Or a little bit of both.
Could have shifted.
Depends on how, depends on what.
Yeah.
Exactly what happens on the lakes, depends on when they start their monuments, where they, where they survey from the right to the left, to the left to the right, depends on.
But we get those.
They pay taxes in Meeker.
All that matters.
In front of our board.
We get those new corner monuments, and it might be in a totally different state, who knows? Okay. Any other questions for Greg? Hearing none, I would look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the application for conditional use permit number one six six zero six to move more than ten cubic yards of material within the shore impact zone and fifty cubic yards of material on the shoreline district of the recreational development, Lake Francis, with the conditions.
We have a motion by Commissioner Van Orde. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries.
The next item I have for you is Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash oh six, and it's for septic restoration clean water project, partnership loan agreement. We signed a similar agreement to this back in March of two thousand and twenty-three. And since that time, there has been many, been one, two, three, four, five contacts at the NPCA that we've dealt with in the past two years for this actual loan program. So now we've got this back before, so we've got the green light to get this resolution again. What this will do, it'll allow us to apply for a, for the GEO loans for a septic loan program for two hundred and seventy-five. First step we need to do, we need to have this resolution passed. Two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars will roughly upgrade about fifteen septic systems. We don't yet know the loan, the interest rate right now, it'll be anywhere from, the old loan we had back in two, that expired in two thousand and twenty-two, was a zero percent loan. In twenty-three, it was going to be about one point five percent, and right now, they haven't indicated if it's going to be one point five to two point five percent. They're not sure until we actually apply for the GEO loan at that time. We can put another one point five percent on top of their loan rate, so it'll probably be, for the customer, it'll probably be anywhere from three to four percent is what we'll be charging the customers for.
Have we been doing that in the past?
We have had, yes, we have.
So, it says financial impact, no if, no impact if customers pay their taxes on time.
We haven't had anybody, to my knowledge, that's been negligent on that. And if they sell the property before the ten-year amortization period, they have to pay it back at the time of the sale of the property.
Okay.
So, that's one of the stipulations.
Any other questions for Greg? If not, I would look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-five zero six authorizing Meeker County to enter into a Minnesota Clean Water Partnership Loan Agreement for the Implementation of Meeker County Subsurface Sewage Treatment System Clean Water Program.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schmidt. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Van Orde. Is there any further discussion?
Have we used this money up every time we've gotten it?
Pretty close, been very close. We got two seventy-five last time, and I think we used maybe two fifty. We've always been pretty close, within about twenty-five, thirty thousand of using it up generally.
Okay.
Corey, this is a resolution, so. Any further discussion? If not, Corey, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Samke?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Orde?
Yes.
Commissioner Oberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. Greg, just stay there, because we're going to have to, Brandy's next on the list, and if she realizes she's got this much time.
Oh, boy.
Thank you.
He'd probably like to go over there.
Well, I guess. Baseball game, I'd be at six-thirty, another scoreboard.
He might be kidding, Greg.
Have some of those candies we can pass over. Maybe Brandy should.
Yeah, good afternoon, Brandy Sheaf, by Meeker County Attorney. I have to give compliments to my office manager, Mandy Pollak, for putting this slideshow together. I'm not, I'm not this talented. There's a lot of things I'm good at, but putting together slideshows is not one of them.
And she did it one-handed.
Pardon?
And she did it one-handed.
Yes, very talented.
With one hand tied behind her back.
So, here we have our team. So in the Meeker County Attorney's Office, we have ten staff, including myself. We have the county attorney, who supervises all staff. We promoted first assistant John Fitzgerald a few years ago, he's doing a great job. He's now helping with the attorneys, helping with that onboarding process, as we often have that rotating attorney, assistant county attorneys within our office. So he's kind of that first layer, and he really does handle a lot of the more serious criminal cases. So he's our super felony assistant county attorney. We have an assistant county attorney who's been with us for six years, that's Matt Holstein. Then we have Jake Manska, who's been with us for one year. As you can see, unfortunately, we have one opening, and we just went through an interview rounds, and it doesn't look like we're going to be able to pick an attorney for that pool. It's important that, it's imperative that we pick the right person for that position. It's still difficult to hire for assistant county attorneys. But what was interesting is during that interview, the multiple interviews, they brought up the videos that we made on behalf of the county, there was a clip, so when they are Googling, that's what they're looking at. And so, they're saying, hey, we saw this video, it's a great place to work, and so we want to work here too. So, that was nice to hear. Hopefully, in the near future, we can find someone to fill that position, because, you know, when you only have four assistant county attorneys, that's a lot of cases to shuffle over. We have our office manager, Mandy Pollak, she's the most senior in our office with thirteen years. She is the liaison for the assistant county attorneys, myself, law enforcement. And then we have a victim crime witness coordinator, very, very important role, we've had that for years. We've been fortunate to have a part-time victim advocate, that's grant-funded, and so we have that through the funding cycle. So it's very important that we keep that federal and state funding. And then we have two legal assistants, one's part-time and then one's full-time. And you can see that Shelley's been with us for eight years, and Michelle's been with us for three years. And Joy, our part-time, has been for a year and a half, crime victim advocate for three years. So, we're doing, we're doing good with the, I would call this pretty good for the amount of time that people have in the office.
Brandy, like your legal assistants, they're not like paralegals.
They don't have the licenses for paralegals, so unfortunately, but they do a lot of legal work where they're doing, they're, they're not doing the drafts of memorandums, but they are pumping out a lot of nice letters, templates, so that kind of work. Very important, we need them. They create our files when we go to trial, they make sure all of our, everything, we're, we use a case management system that's now online, we got that through COVID funding, which was great. And so they make sure everything's put into that case management system. As you can see, and I think almost everyone's had a tour of our attorney space, we are no longer in the basement, but we're up on the fourth floor, so hopefully the public is getting that message that they can come visit us on the fourth floor. We are not the treasurer's office, we're not the recorder's office, we're not the assessor's office. Yeah, a lot of people wanted to pay us taxes, just recently, so we have maps now that we're providing to the public to make sure they know where they're going. Some recent achievements and challenges, so in two thousand and twenty-four, we gained additional four hundred and seventy-three new cases. That's about the standard between four fifty, five hundred is our norm. We disposed of three hundred and fifty-one open cases, that means attorneys are resolving files and working through those. We've served three hundred and sixty-one victims, which is why it's so important to have that crime victim advocate in her part-time. Our office is focused on victims, and we make sure that their voices are being heard. And so, that's a lot more work, because you have to communicate with them, they're usually not in their most, it's one of their hardest times in life, and so you're trying to communicate and try to rationalize with them. And so, we have a talented team that works together with that. You can see that there's been sixty-three juvenile files, two hundred and thirty-six adult criminal files, sixty-two biz, oh, these are for victims, actually, sixty-three juveniles who were our victims, two hundred and thirty-six adults who are victims, and then sixty-two businesses are unreported individuals. So, a business could be someone that had their power stolen, you know, if they've had their power stolen, people tap in and they try to steal power, and that adds up. You have thefts of gas, drive-offs, you have burglaries, damage to vehicle, to the outside of the buildings, you have damage to vehicles, so all sorts of different reasons why business, your financial card transaction cases, businesses. We have staff participating in ongoing training in all practice areas, they're forensically, they go to training for corner house, which includes forensic interviewing with little kids. All attorneys are staffed, are trained in that, so that way, if they need to go and be part of an interview on our multidisciplinary team, they have that in their back pocket to be able to use. GAPS Court success, I think Judge Beckman and Tina from Human Services were here about GAPS Court. That's something unique for Meeker County, it's a new process, and I think we're really doing a great job serving those who are falling in between the criminal case and not being found competent to be able to proceed, but not so mentally ill that we're putting them in St. Peters. And so, we're holding them accountable, making them follow through case plans, and actually serving them rather than ignoring them. So, that has been a, and it's a lot cheaper to have all of us work together as a team rather than see them put in a facility. You can see that we have an assistant county attorney vacancy, so unfortunately, that's not a trend I like to see. The legislative changes have been an extreme challenge, so maintaining up on the laws, July one is now when we have bong water cases we can no longer charge out, and that starts July one. So, all probation cases, and it's retroactive to two thousand and twenty-three. So why does that make sense? Who knows? But we still have to go with it and make sure we're addressing those changes. Marijuana is now legal, so finding different ways to address those challenges. ERPOs are our new emergency protective orders, and Meeker County hasn't done one, but we've had other counties come in, because they're concerned about people who live here who committed crimes in their county, and have requested the court to order those. The MRA, that is the Minnesota Rehabilitation and Reinvestment Act, is on the horizon. It's going to cause a stir with victims, as it focuses on early structured release from prison of inmates. Unfortunately, it's up to seventy percent early release, so that is hard for victims to try to understand and comprehend. Hey, when you gave that offer, you told me that he, he or she was going to go to prison for X amount of time. Now why are they getting released? Brandy, you didn't keep your word. And so, that's a communication that we're going to have to, with our victims on. There's a, the amount of data that's coming in on these cases is absolutely insane, because we're now using phones to track people, three sixty, Life three sixty, the Snapchat data, we can get all that. So you think that it disappears, but we can get it, and we're using it. And we're using it in those cases where we're trying to figure out who did it, who committed that crime. Using them in our homicide cases, but also using them in HRO violations, where were they located? And child sexual abuse material, so we call that CSAM, formerly known as porno, child porn. So, all of those things, we're using this data to, to review and look through kick accounts. And that's been an extreme challenge, because we are now going through, I think on the last homicide trial, we had, we had over fifteen hundred pages of just messages through their phone records that we had to siphon through. And it was for a short snippet of time as well. Judicial trends with bail and departures, I think it's, it's not a secret that there has been some trends. Bail is now supposed to be, to be more achievable for inmates, and so you don't see our jail filled with inmates like we used to fifteen years ago. Departure rates, the judges are looking at what are other ways to provide services and rehabilitate these individuals without having to send them to prison. And so, the, the court is finding ways to depart. There are times where our office will agree with defense, saying, hey, this person should not go to prison, let's try these services first. And so there's agreements that they are also departing from. And two thousand and twenty-four, so here's a little snapshot of data for, I do an update every year for the radio, and so this is some of the data I use for that radio when I met out there, and it's two hundred and forty-eight new major criminals, so these are all that were prosecuted within our office. And so you can see that drugs are still kind of up there, you can see that the misdemeanor gross misdemeanor, or the miscellaneous gross misdemeanor offenses, that would include your theft, your crim damage to property, HROs, your harassment restraining orders are HROs, order for protections are OFPs. So those kind of gross misdemeanor offenses. You can see that domestic assaults are in there, drug offenses, they changed the drug laws, and so fifth degrees are not the same as what they used to be. You see that there's murders, those are attempted murders, as well as just regular murder.
Is that up or down?
It's a, it's an increasing trend. We, ten years ago, it was not normal for us to have this many murders. So we are seeing a lot more activity that's extremely serious, and those are the ones that are the heavy cases. Person crimes, property crimes, sex crimes, so fortunately, the, some of the challenging cases are those sexual assault crimes, to be able to prove, because most often, it's just your, the victim's word against the alleged defendant. So, those can be challenging. This, for new minor criminal cases, this would include the Litchfield Prosecutor's Office, so the city of Litchfield also prosecutes these lower-level offenses, they prosecute misdemeanors and gross mis, some gross misdemeanors. But you can see that the traffic offenses, these include payables as well, so those who get a ticket. So this is anyone who has been in violation of the law, that's how many people in Meeker County have gone through the court system. You can see jurisdictionally, with law enforcement, we have all sorts of agency partners. We don't just work with our own Meeker County Sheriff's Office, we work with the Litchfield Police Department, Ene Valley Police Department, Haynesville Police Department, we work with the BCA, the DNR, the Department of Commerce, as well as the FBI.
What about your surrounding counties? Do you end up working with Wright and Sterns and?
Yes, so we also work with multiple counties as well, because a victim could go and report in Renville County, but then we would prosecute it here. So we work with outside agencies, you got the C-six Task Force that isn't covered on here, but those are all different sorts of, all different counties included in that as well. So yes, most definitely working with outside agencies. State Patrol's not listed on here, and we work with them quite often as well. They come through, they get DWIs, traffic offenses. City prosecution contracts, so not only do I prosecute just for rural Meeker County, but also for the city of Cosmos, Darwin, Dassel, Ene Valley, Grove City, and Watkins. So the only area that we do not prosecute is for the city of Litchfield. The city of Litchfield has their own city attorney, they have a contract that they work with the city council on, and so they handle all of those cases, but like I said, they are not juveniles, they are not felonies, they're not most gross misdemeanors, it's just your lower, lower level. So they never have a felony level trial.
So, so then, any, any of that comes through you, any, any upper-level.
Right.
Criminal activity comes through your office, even from Litchfield?
Correct. So I do work with the Litchfield Police Department. Correct. So I do work with the Litchfield Police Department. We work with, so we have the multidisciplinary team. So if there's any child abuse, vulnerable adult abuse, that all comes through the city of, the police department of Litchfield, and then it would get routed through me as well. So Human Services, my office, as well as Litchfield Police Department. You can see here the stages of a criminal court case, and you can see how long it takes to kind of process through that. You have the review and charging. So law enforcement does their investigation and they bring them to us. And with, with reviewing charging, sometimes we have to have, if someone's arrested and they're in custody, they have to be seen within forty-eight hours. So we have to get that complaint pumped out. So law enforcement has to do their due diligence in getting it to us. We have to review it to make sure it meets all of the elements in order, before we can prosecute and charge. Or we try to get a turnaround of out of custody, so someone who's not in jail but has been, um, investigated for a crime. Try to get those out within two weeks when we're down in an attorney. It obviously, um, slows that process down because we don't have enough bodies to review.
Brandy, funny ask, just going by this last murder that happened in the state of Minnesota. And when he went to court, the judge asked him what he had for assets. And then the judge said, that's not enough for a proper defense. Do they still take those assets that he does have? Or is it a hundred percent on the state then for the, uh, public defender?
So the public defender application is never reviewed by my office. So that, they complete that usually in the jail or prior to the hearing. It goes to court administration and then the judge makes a determination. Now, if you're asking, is it truthful or truthful or not? That I'd never know unless I'm aware of a situation or there's funds out there, or a victim reports, hey, this individual has a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and they're safe, then you would communicate that with, um, the public defender's office, and they would have to determine whether or not that disqualifies them. So I never see that side of it. I don't wanna be biased on their representation.
Right.
Then you have your first appearance or your arraignment hearing. In custody hearings are the day after their arrest or the second day, but they have to be within that forty-eight hours. Out of custody arraignments are set around sixty days from charging. So you get a ticket in the mail and you wanna fight it, or I charge you with theft, and you have your first appearance. It's usually set out sixty to ninety days. Then you have in between there, you try to negotiate, that looks like sixty-one to ninety days. Negotiations is consulting with our law enforcement, our victims. Make sure we're reviewing our statutory requirements. Sometimes if you get a certain number of DWIs, you have to do, uh, house arrest or you have to serve some jail time. So there's certain requirements that come along with each of those. Uh, then we have our pre-trial, which is set out to ninety-one to a hundred and twenty days. So you can see the trend. Nothing in our system is fast, except for their first appearance. We have pre-trial, which includes evidentiary and omnibus hearings, pre-trial, trial management, settlement conferences, motion and plea hearings. And at those times is when we're trying to litigate. That's when you try to throw, defense is trying to throw out evidence. We're trying to get experts to come in and testify about the motor roller records. The, we have an expert who would come in and communicate, um, about the stages of, um, domestic violence, the, the coping mechanisms for being sexually abused. So those are all things we have to litigate, and the court has to make a decision. Then we go to trial around a hundred and twenty-one days, a hundred and thirty-five days. No, this is not for your murders. We're not thinking outside of, you know, your super serious burglaries. This is more of your standard case. And then that jury trial can range, it's usually between three to five days. Sometimes you can get it done maybe in a day and a half, but it's two to three, up to five days.
Um, is this an typical timeline for most counties?
I would say yes.
Okay.
I would say yes. Then we have that trial, then you have sentencing. Sentencing is then, uh, but you only have sentencing if the individual was convicted or pled guilty. If it was dismissed, it's over. But then at sentencing, that's when the victims get to speak, and that's our opportunity to share their side of the story and, and the pain and suffering that they experienced. The person is either prison, um, committed to the Department of Corrections, which is prison, local jail, probation, fines, fees. You know, we used to do sentence to serve, community work service. So we found unique situations for that. Now, if we're looking at
Stairs, planning commission. He's here for
Yes, it's done the, uh, by the planning zoning office.
So trial timeline. I think there was a question that maybe Commissioner Johnson had asked a while ago about how many hours are we putting in per trial? And, or maybe someone asked it. And so here I kind of outlined, and by I, I mean Mandy outlined the, um, amount of hours that we're kind of putting into the trial. If, we just had a murder trial last year, and that was a two-week murder trial, it takes two days just to get a selected jury. And so that's just a slow process. The hours you put in for a homicide is much different than that of a, of a theft or drive-off of gas. So the preparation is forty to eighty hours. That includes organizing your case, which we don't have a paralegal to do that. We do use our legal assistants, but then it's really up to the attorney to put that case together. Uh, evaluate evidence, you meet with your witnesses. I have a requirement in the office that there shall be not one witness that gets on the stand that has not met with you. You should, they should know every question you're gonna ask, and you should know every answer that they're gonna have. So that way there is no surprises, because otherwise you get up on the stand and you realize, I should never have taken this case to trial, and you now wasted all of our resources. So that is a, a requirement in our offices that you will be prepared. And, and all of our witnesses appreciate that. No one wants a surprise. Then we start with voir dire. Voir dire is just where we question jurors to weed out those with biases, prejudice, or past experiences that may influence their verdict to ensure a fair trial. And so that can take time. You're actually engaging. It's the most personable time. That's the only time you're gonna hear from the jurors, otherwise they sit there quietly. You have opening statements. That's where you summarize the case in plain terms, explain the law. Prosecution first, the defense goes second. And opening statements, you do not use a PowerPoint. You are now telling the story of what happened to have this crime be committed and lead us up to the charges. Then you have your case in chief. That is the bulk of your work. And preparation is really your case in chief. It's preparing all your witnesses, meeting with them, drafting the questions out and going through them and making sure you're meeting all of the elements. In order to prove a case, you need to meet certain elements for each crime. It is not listed in statute what the elements are. It's listed in our jury instruction guides, which is not necessarily, it could be public if you pay for our West Law, but it's not something that everyone is, has common knowledge of. So you have to make sure you're hitting all those points. Closing statements, that's where you could go on for three to six hours on your closing statements if you need to. You have, I think on our homicide, we had over a hundred and fifty PowerPoint slides to go through all of the different charges. And then you have your jury deliberation and your verdict, and that is you sit there for six to eight hours, if not longer, for waiting for the jury. And the attorneys have to stay in the office. They cannot leave. Um, they can go about maybe ten, fifteen minutes because if they get that call for a question, or if you get that jury verdict, you have to be there to be able to go back up to court. So it's not like staff can just go home, put on their pajamas, and wait. They have to stay in the office and be ready for that. And sometimes it's, they let them deliberate until ten PM. So it's a, it's a time commitment. So since we're talking about trials, Meeker County trial data for two thousand and twenty-four, we had five felony trials, and we had, um, a third degree homicide. That was back in September. That was a guilty verdict. It took about two weeks to go through that, and the individual was sent to prison. We had a felon in possession of a firearm who had a previous crime of violence, so it enhances the severity of it. That was a guilty verdict. That, um, individual received a departure from the court. So we go to trial. We get a guilty verdict, yet that person is still not sent to prison because they had now received a departure against our objection. And so that's part of the system, is you have to accept that. So that is one thing that we take into consideration when we're talking about resolution. What are we gonna gain by going to trial? We're going to inconvenience and subject these people and victims to tra- more trauma and require all the individuals for jury att- or the jury to come in and have to sit through and listen. What are we gaining? And so that's the evaluation that we're taking before we go to trial. Whoops. So then we had, um, a fifth degree controlled substance. That was a not guilty verdict, a threats of violence, which is another felony. That's a not guilty verdict. And those are good to see because that means we're trying the right cases. It's three guilty and two not guilty. If we're getting guilty's all the time, then we're giving away the farm, and that's unacceptable. We need to make sure we're still tough on crime, but yet not wasting our, our, the community's time by coming in and sitting on the jury. So then we had a burglary, which is a felony unlawful possession of a firearm and ammunition, which are all felony level offenses, and we got a guilty verdict on that. And that individual was sent to prison. Five misdemeanor court trials. That means that the, there were no jury. The judge made the final outcome on that. And three child protection trials. Which is, it's, it's, and you can see the chart, how she has the number of cases that have increased, and you can kind of see that dip on jury service. So we haven't required as many juries to come in, however, the amount of trials is still about five.
So Brandy, recently in Meeker County, we had the murder of Vern Dassel. The man who, how long was that? You know, you showed your timeline.
Still active, so I can't comment on it.
He's still in jail, I think.
Like I said, most, um, when we talk about most serious offenses, those take a little while to process and get through.
So there really is no such thing as a speedy trial that I hear so much about on Car TV?
Actually, um, the trial that we had in September was a speedy trial demand. So that homicide trial, third degree murder, was a speedy trial demand. We had to ask for an extension because our main, um, witness was unavailable. And so we had to kick it for good cause. But yeah, that was a speedy trial demand, so we were scrambling, and that is within sixty. I think that one, we had it within ninety days of when they asked for the speedy trial. On a homicide, that's fast.
Can the defendant ask for a speedier trial and you have to do it?
Yes, that's what happened here. We were scrambling to make sure all of our, because the BCA doesn't do their testing overnight. There's a lot of stuff down there, and so when you get to that level, the BCA is usually involved in a homicide or s- you're extremely serious felonies. So they have all the data, they have to get it to us. We had to test, um, the drugs. You know, if there are firearms involved or a bullet, you have to get the ballistics, you have to get, all of that stuff needs to be done in order for us to be able to process and try a case.
So Jack McCoy on Law and Order, he does not get those cases done in one hour?
I don't watch Law and Order anymore.
So we go to trial and there is a verdict. Then what? There's an appeal process. So for a victim case, a victim, we let them know. Just because we go to trial doesn't mean it's done. That what it means is there was a jury who believed you, and now you have to do the appeal process. So in this appeal process, I have it outlined that, you know, the defense will file notice of appeal and statement of the case within sixty days. So we'll know within sixty days if they're gonna file or not, and then the court has to print all the transcripts. So that's why you have that court reporter, because they're submitting all of those transcripts.
How many appeals have you had in the last year?
Ooh, you know, that is one data stat that I did not, um, take. However, the Attorney General's Office doesn't help us out with a lot of appeals. However, when you get those lower level offenses and they're gross A, we typically have to keep those cases. So like, they won't be taking a misdemeanor trial. They won't take an appeal where we feel that the judge got the order wrong um, at a pre-trial stage, so before sentencing or before there's a verdict. If we say, hey, judge got that wrong, they should not be throwing out that evidence. The Attorney General's Office doesn't take it, so our office will have to do that. So you can see that you have the District Court, Court of Appeals. The appeals from a Minnesota task, tax, tax court, it goes, um, to a different, does not go to the Court of Appeals. It goes to the ta- tax court. And we actually had one of those filed this year, which we worked with the assessor's office on and was able to resolve it without having to get through too much litigation. So even after an appeal, then what? Say we successfully won an appeal, well then you have individuals who can expunge their records. They can, you're now getting into the phase of, well, if they can petition, meaning they ask for it, or if the court's now just automatically gonna expunge them. It's a new law that we're working through. And, um, there have been hearings where I've had staff in our office object to the expungement. We don't think it's an appropriate time to be expunging. There hasn't been enough time. There hasn't been enough remorse. But the hearing panel gets to decide that over us.
So when Minnesota passed that law about marijuana being legal, they said they were gonna expunge the records? Did that fall on you guys to do, or?
No, not our office. We don't have to do that. I think that was through BCA mostly, and then the courts. Yep.
That's like a whole, that's sort of the Attorney General's, there's a
Task force.
Harley Stark, if you remember her from AMC, she's on that clemency expungement. It's like a whole
Cannabis expungement board?
Yeah, there's a review board.
I think it's good at times depending, you know, if you hear about somebody that did something when they were nineteen years old, and it's affected their whole career for, you know, at, at what point.
We do support expungements. There are times where we will support them.
That's good and not, times not so good, but.
We've had ninety-two new juvenile delinquency child protection cases filed in Meeker County. You can see that it's kind of pulled out. We have child protection cases, only seven of them, which is a huge compliment to the Human Services Department. The ship that, um, Paul Bukovich was steering was best practices in safety planning. And you can see that there is an increased trend in the child protection cases that have been filed. Doesn't mean that Human Services isn't doing their job and working with them. It means it hasn't reached the threshold for having to go to the court system and have a judge point their finger at these families and say, you need to do X, Y, and Z. The families are voluntarily complying in the other cases where we're not seeing them. So we had, um, and, and, and they were kind of broken out a little bit differently when it comes to the data. But when you put this into perspective, the child protection matters for two thousand and twenty were fifty-four. We had twenty, in two thousand and twenty-one, we had thirty-three. We were saying the same in two thousand and twenty-two at thirty-three. And in two thousand and twenty-three, we had forty-seven, and twenty-four, we had sixteen. So you can see that there was a decline. The little bit of a blurb up, I think, was during COVID when we weren't really being able to address and provide all the services to the families that they needed. And so I think that was a disservice that just naturally happened as a result of the pandemic.
And those cases are very time-consuming, correct?
Right.
They can get very expensive. The parents each get an attorney. We, we, we have representation. It's always better to be able to keep the children with family, obviously, and it's, I think our social service department does a great job. I mean, it's a big decision.
It's a balance. Yes, and, and we have a multidisciplinary team so that they don't have to make those decisions alone. They have law enforcement, they have the county attorney's office to work with them to evaluate this case so that they feel supported. Um, Department of Human Services is involved as well, DHS, I, I, DCYF, I think is what they're called now. But another number in here that the trend is re- it's, it's reduced is the truancy. The number of truancy cases that we've had has reduced as well, because we have that truancy worker, we have our safe school meetings, and so we're really doing a lot to prevent on the front end. You can see that there's twenty-three new miscellaneous civil files, the guardianship, conservatorships, the commitments and forfeitures. Forfeitures has really reduced since they changed that law a few years ago of what we can forfeit. So we used to be able to forfeit a few more things than we can now. The threshold is a lot, um, higher in order to get to that forfeit level. Now, this doesn't include the civil files that I review for contracts or the litigations that I, um, consult on as well. This is just the, the commitment guardianship and that forfeitures. So what else do we do besides those areas? Civil representation for employment. So we do work with our employment attorney. Contract review, you guys are conditioned, you as the commissioners are conditioned very well to know that the contracts are reviewed by my office, specifically myself, involved in civil lawsuits, so civil litigation. We provide consultation to department heads and county commissioners. We're the legal advisor for PACT for Families, counsel for legal issues for Meeker Memorial Hospital, chair of the Minnesota Criminal, or Minnesota County Attorneys Association, the, the Criminal Law Committee, that's me. And then I will be president of that association next year if I so survive. Um, and other community involvement. So those are
Pulling for you, by the way.
When you represent these other people, do we charge for that? Say when you do the hospital legal issues, do we charge them?
No.
We don't? Do we charge back? Say when you're doing a CHIPS case, does your time get charged back to social service?
Yes.
So what's the deciding factor on when you charge and when you don't, I guess?
The, so we charge for the contracts for prosecution for all of the cities, so I do charge the cities for their prosecution. So instead of having me just cover it for nothing, we do bill. We bill for my time and the legal, or the attorney time and the legal assistance. So we'll do that. We bill for, I do not bill for PACT for Families because it's a, we rotate. So the counties end up rotating their legal authority. I was the legal counsel for CHS for five years, and so instead of just billing back to these And so instead of just billing back to these com- areas where we're trying to save money and provide services. We just kind of make sure we're rotating in that area. And as far as Meeker Memorial Hospital, they are an entity or arm of the county, I provide legal advice to EDA.
You get some involved in planning and zoning, but not. We use some outside counsel for that when there's an issue, don't we?
Yeah, the um the title review work that's done with outside counsel, but Brandy does get involved from time to time.
I understand, but I mean, you can't be everything to everyone is my point. Oh, you can be, Brandy.
No, I I just try to help where I can. The H R A will provide legal advice, because otherwise you're taking money back from the people. So instead of using levy dollars to, because they're gonna come back and they're gonna ask you for fifteen thousand dollars to cover my s- my bill. So I just do that um.
In the big reason to charge Health and Human Services is it builds the administrative profile, which impacts the rates that we then get from the state.
Thank you.
So what can we do? So we see a lot of people in their worst days, so where can we find some joy in our job? Is the community involvement, doing the youth mentorship, we have students coming in and doing job shadowing. We're trying to get individuals interested and excited in our careers. Public safety and prevention, providing professional education, so um we do mock trials, we do moot court. We have mentorship and career fairs, Boys and Girls Club, those job shadows I just discussed. As far as professional education, we provide that to community members, um educating, we provide. Additional education about the government system to the the school folks, safe schools meetings. Parents, guardians, Sheriff's Association, law enforcement, county attorneys association and local emergency response teams. Public safety, we do it through s- safe schools, MAP, Domestic Violence Advisory Board, Child and Adult Multidisciplinary Teams. Drug Court, Juvenile Diversion PACT, and then um Minsky, which is the Minnesota Sex Crime Investigators Conference. Last slide, future goals. So what I'd like to see happen is an internship program, I really wanna build it into an internship program. But every time I start looking at it, I'm just trying to stay afloat by trying to fill another vacant assistant county attorney position. So this has been something I've been looking at for well over three years, just haven't implemented it. A data analyst position is something we're floating around, it's something you could put in the sheriff's office. However, if you put it in the sheriff's office, I'm not getting that support in our office with all those other local agencies. So when you have Litchfield Police Department handling these homicide cases, then I don't have that data analyst. So looking at something like that coming in our office in the future. A juvenile arrest uh restorative justice program, we do juvenile diversion. And we have lots of juveniles go through there and use that program and benefit from it. But this is would be something more robust where we're actually providing um bigger services, more mentorship to these juveniles. Who are committing these delinquency crimes, I'm not talking those that still need to be put on probation. But that first tier of crime that is, it's just where I think that having a few more fingers on them might be in their best interest. Any questions?
I do wanna comment because I, I'll talk a little bit in my my report, but I mentioned the success of the. I think the the keeping the kids and the families together, Brian, how the the county attorney and the judges and the. Health and Human Services and all these people are working together really, you know, I was kind of touting that as this really nice success and um how things were looking. And and one guy in the back of the room just kind of went off on me, it was weird, it was like, well, it's only been one year. And you see what that's gonna happen to these kids down the road, all this kind of stuff, and I'm thinking to myself, hmm, something's, something got him around.
Everybody's got an opinion.
It was a Dassel City Council meeting last night. So I I don't know what the deal was with that, but it was odd, I was like, does he know something I don't? So I don't know, it was weird.
No, we, in Meeker County, we pride ourselves with collaboration. We have a judge who's, obviously you know that she came and presented in front of the um county board, she doesn't need to. But she definitely is willing to collaborate on those resources, we have Department of Corrections, who is coming to the table at our meetings. We have commissioners present at those meetings, and so we really have a lot of involvement with the different law enforcement agencies as well.
I think, and I think that collaboration starting five years ago or whatever it's been now. Where we met with the judge and and uh HHS and Corrections and really every player in the game. And had kind of a round table to analyze, you know, what can I do better to assist this department? And that collaboration has shown, shown up, really is an example for other counties. And uh I think that was a a turning point, and a a strong turning point, I would say.
I have a question regarding the internship program, are you looking, I mean, would this help you with your workload, having an intern come in? Is there a potential for the uh intern to maybe move into a permanent position? Is this, you know, is that kind of part of what you're looking at?
Exactly, however, you have to build that individual to really bloom in that position. And it takes a lot of work to educate and get them up to speed. And so to do that for three months in the summertime or whenever that may be, when you're trying to onboard a new assistant county attorney. It's a balance of how do we make sure that we're not floundering and having an unsuccessful internship program? Because I don't want that reputation either.
You want a a good investment. Yeah, yeah.
And that could be paid or unpaid internship program, sometimes the schools, what I did when I was um in law school was I did an internship program. And it was unpaid, but I got school credits for it and it was a great experience and guess what? I ended up working in the place that I internshiped at.
That is Brandy.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions for? Thank you.
Was that fifteen minutes?
And thank your staff. And now we call upon our county administrator, Andrew Platsa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um you know, knowing that we had some time this evening, I thought. Uh I would take this opportunity to do something I haven't done before and kind of have a discussion about our budget. Before we get into having everything put together, talk about some of the um, you know, kind of where we ended twenty twenty-four. Look at some of the challenges that we see coming down the pike and things that you're gonna wanna start thinking about as we go through the process. So first off, uh what does our calendar look like? The development of the budgets really an eight-month-long process starts in May. When uh department directors uh will put together position requests, those then get reviewed by the uh personnel and class and and compensation committees. Those have already occurred, that work is done, uh but the departments are now working on developing their budget sheets themselves. Come July, the Budget Committee will meet, we're gonna have a work session to uh meet with our uh organizations who are requesting appropriations. Uh August, the Budget Committee will continue to meet and then we'll have a work session to talk about the budget as a whole. September, by September thirtieth, by statute, we need to adopt our preliminary levies, we will make sure that we do that. And then in December, uh the first meeting in December, we're gonna meet like this again in the evening, we'll have our truth and taxation hearing. And have the opportunity to do fi- do the final approval of the levy in the budget.
So when you met in May, maybe this is coming, in June, did you make decisions on asking departments to cut? Or you just start with what they bring in and go from?
We always, so when when I start this process, I always kind of talk to departments about where I see things going. Where I see being the challenges coming along and, you know, I I don't. This year I did not give them a you need to cut ten percent out of your budget, but here are the challenges that I see coming. You make requests based on what you think is necessary and we will then have those conversations. But know that this is probably not a year to, you know, wanna make a a big purchase that is not necessary. So when we talk about the budget, um what we're really talking about is a is a combination of funds. Uh these are the ones that are the most applicable to uh to the county board, our general fund, our road and bridge fund. Um human services, parks, solid waste, regional library, opioid settlement, what used to be called Family Services Building, now the Government Center Building. Capital projects and debt service, they're funded through a variety of means, primarily property taxes, state revenue sharing and grants. Uh and and some federal grants as well, we also have fees of fees for service in a couple of different areas, particularly parks, solid waste. Uh and then um some of the funds we transfer money into from other places. So as we look at where we ended twenty twenty-four, um the the four or five columns that we see up here is, this is all by fund. Uh the revenues that we get, that were in the adopted budget, the revenues that were actual. Uh expenditures that were adopted, expenditures that were actual, and then the net. And everything that's in parentheses means that we used fund balance out of that fund that year. The, wanna note that these numbers are unaudited, uh so they are um, you know, there is still potential for change before the audit is finalized. Uh which usually happens over the summer or early fall. But uh kind of the high line, um we uh budget total revenue is a fifty-three million two hundred seventy-two thousand dollars. We brought in forty-three million nine hundred thirty-nine dollars, now that looks like, well, wait a minute, what happened to ten million dollars here? But um we had anticipated substantial use of fund balance last year, we anticipated substantial use. I'm sorry, uh eleven million dollars in fund balance use, and the reason for that primarily is because of the remodel project. Seven point seven million of that uh fund balance use was in the capital projects fund for the remodel project. The other portions uh were in the general fund, we had about just shy of two million dollars there. The reason why uh this net amount is only about fifty thousand dollars is because uh we actually ended the year. At ninety-eight percent of our revenue and expenses, um but what made up for a lot of that fund balance use. We we did a lot of the things that were included in there, most everything that was, we said, this is what can be paid for out of fund balance, we did. But we were very fortunate, our investment income continued to be very strong. We budgeted eight hundred fifty thousand dollars in investment income, we brought in two point four million dollars. So that extra one point six million is what kept our fund balance from really dipping as we had planned for it to, which was good news.
Good news is at every board, but I'm on, but now it's starting to go the other way.
Well, that that's, you know, we had anticipated, we had a a larger than budgeted investment income in twenty twenty-three as well. Um so we budgeted a little bit less in twenty twenty-four, we budgeted even less in twenty twenty-five. And part of that is because we anticipate interest rates to drop, they have not dropped at the pace that we are anticipating. However, part of the reason why our investment income was also high is because we had all this cash that was invested. We have spent a lot of that cash, so we just have a lot less there, but investment income continues to be pretty strong. Um and, you know, not that this is a a pure linear look, but at this time, last year, we had about two hundred sixty thousand dollars. That we had brought in investment income, this year at this time, we have about two hundred sixty thousand dollars that we've brought in investment. Does not mean we're gonna have two point four million dollars at the end of the year by any means, but uh we budgeted six seventy-five. And I have a a good feeling about that number. That's just in the general fund, our road and bridge fund, we we grew fund balance a bit by two hundred eighty-four thousand dollars. Uh human services fund, we spent one point three million, one million of that was to go towards the remodel project. So the other three hundred thousand was um, you know, more or less planned use of fund balance for uh the operation of the department. Our uh parks fund, thirteen thousand dollars in fund balance use, solid waste, a hundred thirty-two thousand. Regional library, eleven thousand, that was because, you know, some of these smaller ones are because, you know, the um the tax income didn't come in at a hundred percent. But the money that we pay out to that agency does, so those things happen. Opioid settlement was um more than we expected, uh and then the other things were all planned as well. So debt service, we'll talk about this a little bit later on, but um for the two new commissioners, who who don't know, we have two bonds right now. One was a refunding bond that we issued in twenty twenty-one, uh and the other is the bond from twenty twenty-three that paid for a portion of the remodel costs. Ones, in order to minimize the impact, the levy impact of the new bond, we knew that the twenty twenty-one bond is the last payment's coming in twenty twenty-six. We had enough cash in the fund, the debt service fund to pay for it, so we are paying for those payments out of fund balance, which is why we have a use there. Overall, as I said, we anticipated using uh eleven point three million dollars in fund balance. Uh we used just shy of seven million dollars. Um part of the reason for it being in under is, you know, as we try and estimate the the cash flow for the construction. It's a challenging thing to do eighteen months in advance, uh and so you'll you'll see that while this number was um under budget in twenty-four. It's gonna be a bit over budget in twenty-five, but it it's all within the project budget, so that's all good news. As we look at twenty twenty-five, um you know, we have a a total estimated revenues of fifty-two million three hundred eighty-three thousand. And estimated expenditures of fifty-two million two hundred twenty-six thousand. Uh we have a a bit of a net um increase in the general fund, which is a result of the E nine one one dollars. They're coming, we just have more E nine one one money coming in that was coming out of that fund, but it's restricted money, so we can't just put it towards something else, so it grows that fund balance a bit.
Excuse me, what is E nine one?
Yeah, emergency nine one one, there's uh a portion of the telephone tax that we get from, that the state collects. We get to cover our dispatch service. We can't use it for staff, we can use it for um equipment, we can use it for software, and so that's what we use. Uh and then we anticipated bringing in more opioid funds than we anticipated coming up, so those are the differences there. These are our significant expenses in twenty-five, a couple of the ones I just wanted to highlight real briefly, we have the courthouse parking lot resurfacing. Uh this is a project that we are planning to use our engineering staff from Public Works to help design and and let the contract for. Um because of the exterior work that's been occurring at the courthouse. Um the the timing of getting them out there is, has not worked out the way that we were hoping it would, and now those staff are out um monitoring the jobs that are. The road construction jobs that are occurring, so this project may not happen this year, it may happen in the fall, but if it doesn't, it'll happen in the spring next year. Uh otherwise, four point six million dollars in road projects. Um in uh the sheriff's office, we had just shy of a half a million dollars in squad car replacements. Uh for those commissioners who've been on the board for a while, you know that in twenty twenty, there was a significant problem with getting squad cars. And that problem compounded over the next four years. I'm happy to say that we finally are caught back up and have purchased all of the cars that had been deferred over time. Um that's one of the things that we've been planning to use fund balance for, we budgeted for, at one point, we levied for it. That money has sat there as we've waited for those cars to actually arrive, so that's good news that we're caught up on there. And then the other big. We typically do four to five a year. Um we will frankly have a a challenge four years from now. When the glut of ones that we got earlier this year all come due for replacement, but that's something that we will deal with in four years. Uh and then uh we had the balance of the remodel project in there as well. So as we look forward to twenty twenty-six, uh big thing, of course, is the remodel project's gonna be done. So that one thing that has really kind of inflated our budget over the past few years is is no longer gonna be there, so that'll be good news. Uh we don't have any significant personnel adjustments that we're anticipating, we've no new positions that were requested. Uh we do have two reclassifications that um the personnel in the class and comp committee have have taken a look at. Technically, one of them is a new position, but it eliminates an existing position, so that's why I just called it a reclassification. Our um union contracts include a three percent cost of living adjustment, so that's what we're gonna plan for across the board. Uh we have been working with David Drawn Associates over the past few years to um do a market analysis of our compensation system, make sure that we are remaining competitive. Uh what we look at with that is that based on the um the minimum and the maximum of the range, what is the percentage of the average? Of all the comparable communities that we look at, um do our mines and maxes compare to the uh all the other comparables, right? If it's at a hundred percent, it means that we're at the market average, if it's over a hundred percent, it means we're above market, if we're under a hundred percent, it's below market average. What we have been shooting for uh as as a board is keeping everything on average above ninety percent. Last year, uh we were at ninety-three percent at the bottom of the range across all of our positions, ninety-two percent at the top of the range across all of our positions. Last year, we did um a a fairly significant adjust- adjustment where we adjusted the bottom and the top of all of the scales. In order to to bring that up a bit, and I'm happy to say that uh when DDA did our market analysis this year, they found. That we are at ninety-six and ninety-five percent, so that adjustment that we did, plus the cost of living that we did last year, has really held. And has ensured that our our um compensation system remains competitive, so that's good news. So we're not gonna be seeing a significant increase there, there are a handful of positions that um are targeted for adjustment. Because of their um how they compare to the market, uh but primarily they're single occupant positions. A couple of them have two or three people in them, so there's really minimal cost that's gonna be impacted. So there's really minimal cost that's going to be impacted with that. Last year, I think we invested about a quarter million dollars. This year, it's could be more like fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. So very good news.
That's been about three years where the significant adjustments.
Yes.
That's enough.
Yes, we, I would say at this point, we are caught up. I reserve the right to say that we may fall behind again. But I think the process that we are using of looking at this every year is going to help prevent us from doing that.
I agree.
We do anticipate a health insurance adjustment. We've been really fortunate for those employees who are in the prime health pool, which is the vast majority of our our group. We've seen really stable increases, three, four, five percent in that range. Last couple of years have been in that three and four percent increase. We, I don't think we've topped a six percent in the eight years that we've been a part of that group. And then our law enforcement staff, union law enforcement staff, and a couple of other folks who are in the the public employee insurance program, it's a state-run pool called PEAP. They had seen some significant increases over a few years. We've been fortunate, the last two years have actually been decreases in that as well. So our our hope is that we will continue to see some stable numbers there. Prime Health will know what our number looks like come end of July. PEAP usually tells us like October, so. Well, we we do budget a contingency for that, and we adjust it if necessary. And lastly, really fortunately, the state impact that we had been fearing is not going to be as as great as as we at one point thought. We will have to still plan for the implementation of the paid family medical program and the cost that's going to apply to us with that. But overall, what we were really concerned about with the the big costs associated with the 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 cost shifts, the disability waiver cost shifts, those things are not going to hit us in twenty twenty-six, which is good news.
They're they're still on the table.
Yes, oh, we'll we'll get to there. Don't worry, we will get to there.
We bought some time, but they're not out of the woods yet.
The the bottom line that I hope you take away from today is that we are in a very strong financial position still. But we do have some challenges that we're going to have to deal with. The waters are not fully calm beneath our our sails. But there are upcoming challenges, see? So the state.
But wait, there's more.
But wait, there is more. The state budget impact remains uncertain. Twenty twenty-seven, we have the Family Preservation Act that we know we're going to have to implement. There's costs associated with that. It's already law. And then twenty-eight and twenty-nine, that biennium is is concerning to me. We, as in lieu of doing the cost shifts, the disability waiver cost shifts, the law includes the creation of this Human Services Cost Savings Reform Work Group. Obviously, we don't know what their work is going to come up with, but what they are tasked to do is find nearly a hundred and seventy-eight million dollars in savings or counties are going to see a residential services cost share of nearly ninety million dollars, which is approximately equal to the five percent cost shift that the governor proposed. And they need to do that by the end of twenty twenty-six. So it is a, it's a risk that continues to be out there that we need to be cognizant of and aware of. The other thing that I didn't put on the slide, but is is frankly the concerns that, you know, those of us who were at the AMC District Meeting last week heard is on the federal level. And the administrative burdens, as well as the frankly, cost shifts that are included in the federal reconciliation bill that will potentially come down our way related to the supplemental nutritional nutrition program, SNAP, and Medicaid as well. So those are things that we'll continue to monitor, and we'll try to figure out how they impact us. We know that when that bill ultimately passes through Congress and is signed into law by the president, that depending on what those impacts are, we are likely to see another special session from the states, and we may see impact that comes to us from that, that we may need to react to before the end of this year. We talked a little bit about fund balance use earlier. We want to continue to remain cognizant of how we're using fund balance in the long term. And there's a couple of areas that we'll want to, that I'll highlight that we want to make sure that we're seeing out with that. And then even though we've are coming to the completion of our remodel project, our buildings continue to have maintenance needs that we're going to have to deal with. And that ties in with some of the fund balance use. I realize it's small, but this is a chart that you've seen before. This is the kind of the worst case scenario of what we were anticipating coming out of the the house when we were looking at the the rate exceptions cost shift. We were expecting in twenty twenty-eight, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-six, that levy impact, including our operating adjustment, to be eight point eight percent, and then eleven point two percent in twenty-seven. This gives you a snapshot of what was actually approved in the law and my estimate of what that's going to cost. And, you know, that's where, you know, the big hit for us in twenty-six, there's still a couple of cost shifts related to competency restoration and behavioral health programs. But the big one is the paid family medical leave, which, based on the point eight-eight percent of the payroll tax, half of that would cost us about seventy-two thousand dollars. The twenty-seven, so I'm sorry, bottom line on that, with an estimated operating increase of three and a half percent, we're about four point one for our levy adjustment. Twenty-seven, the big increase is the Child Welfare Disproportionality Act. The half a million dollars that we have in there is an estimate. We're going to continue to work to refine that and determine how much of that do we really need? But if we do need all of it, we're at about six point three percent. And I have these two boxes here colored orange on disability waivers because who knows? But not bad. I think what we saw come out at the end there is the best case scenario that we could have expected from the start of this process.
I would agree. That's pretty much what AMC is coming up with now. It ain't perfect, but it's far better than where we were.
Far better than the rumors were.
For sure.
They weren't rumors. They're reality.
They were kind of rumors because they didn't turn into reality. I mean, everywhere you went, you heard a new scenario, right?
So as we look at, so these are four areas of fund balance that I want to make sure I highlight for you. General Revenue Fund is the one that we are often the most concerned about because it's our general operating fund. It's our largest fund. And what we are concerned about with the fund balance there is our unassigned fund balance. In the general fund, we have a number of restricted and assigned funds, things that are restricted based on state statute, things like the E nine-one-one money that I mentioned before, the crime victim advocate money that we get, that's all, they can only be used for certain purposes, but it sits within the general fund. So what we do then is we take that total fund balance, we subtract out all the things that we can't spend on whatever it is what we would like to do, and this is the number that we end up with at the end. So unaudited, but the way that it, the auditors said it looked as of last week is that we anticipate we'll be at about eight point four five million dollars in unassigned fund balance in the general fund as of the end of twenty twenty-four. What we then do is we, the the state auditor recommends that in the general fund, we have between thirty-five and fifty percent of our annual revenue as unassigned fund balance. We then take our total revenue, subtract out those restricted things, because, you know, frankly, the way I look at it is if we have eight and a half million dollars here and we're comparing it to this number here, well, we shouldn't count in that restricted AIS money that's a quarter million dollars, right? So we take those things out, and we look at compared to unassigned revenue, we are at fifty point seven percent as of the end of twenty twenty-four. What we were anticipating, or I'll get to the next, get to that in a little bit. In twenty-five, we have budgeted to spend three hundred and two thousand dollars in fund balance, which would leave us about eight point two million, just shy of eight point two million at the end of twenty twenty-five. If we spend a hundred percent of our expenses and we bring in a hundred percent of our revenue, that would leave us at about forty-eight point six percent. If we match what we did in twenty-four, which was do ninety-eight percent of our revenue, ninety-eight percent of expenses, because we budget conservatively, we'd be at about fifty-one percent of revenue. At this point last year, or as of August last year, when we were doing the budget presentation, what we anticipated to be at the end of twenty twenty-five was forty-four percent. So that one point six million dollars of extra investment income has greatly benefited this fund and our financial position. We had made a really conscious effort four years ago to begin spending down some of that fund balance because we were at around sixty-ish percent, sixty-five percent. We were significantly over the fifty percent. So we, I was becoming worried last year at this time that we were going to have to start doing some of those things to build it back up. Where we are at today, assuming that nothing catastrophic happens to us, we are in a very, as I said, a strong financial position.
And I think that sixty percent was, I would say, was a high, a big influence into how we, why we went forward with the remodel.
Yes, I agree.
Because we were at sixty percent.
And and that we, the intent was that money had been built up over time to do something with it. And there had been a long discussion about doing some sort of a major building project. And so we used it for what it had been originally intended to be.
And using it at that time, you probably saved some money. I mean, if you started that project now, the inflation would have eaten up far more, so.
Yes.
That's excellent.
The Human Services Fund at the end of twenty twenty-four, again, unaudited, about three point, this is the cash balance that we had at the end of twenty twenty-four, three point nine million, which when compared to revenues is just shy of thirty-five percent. Again, we have some planned fund balance use in there, less than we had planned the year before, but we are slowly working to build that fund balance off and and go back on to hitting the levy. But we'd be at about three point eight million. We spend a hundred percent of the budget, bring in a hundred percent of the revenue. We'll be at about thirty-three percent at the end of twenty twenty-five, which is below that thirty-five percent threshold by about two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. So we're we're doing okay there, but it's an area that I think that we want to make sure we start to focus not planning to use fund balance for, and maybe start to look for ways to build some of that fund balance a little bit. The other two areas that I have concern about fund balances is our capital projects fund and the Government Center Building Fund. We pay for a lot of the miscellaneous building improvement projects, the air handlers, the the lighting, the doors, things like that that we end up doing in the budget out of cash in one way or the other. We're not necessarily directly levying for that. And I'll get to that in a minute. And so what we're seeing is that over time, those fund balances have have decreased. The Government Center Building Fund, end of last year, had four hundred and seventy-seven, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Anticipation at the end of this year will be just shy of a quarter million. So as we look at how do we fund these things, it's going to be one of the issues that we need to start to look at. This is what we plan to use fund balance for in twenty twenty-five, one point three million dollars. Deferred squads, I mentioned, portion of a plow truck out of the road and bridge fund, some of the operating costs and new case aid position in Human Services. Solid Waste Fund, we took a portion of that money, transferred three hundred thousand dollars to the the general fund and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Capital Projects Fund to pay for for different things. Our Government Center, the building improvements, air handler units, the exterior doors and some partition replacements we have in there, and then the debt service fund I had mentioned before. We did take a chunk of money out of the debt service fund, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, to go towards that parking lot project. Oh, and I just want to note, I mentioned that in the Capital Projects Fund, we have this three sixty-two at the end of twenty-five. I mentioned earlier that we might not do that parking lot project. This anticipates that that money is spent. So this is what's left after everything that we have budgeted in twenty twenty-five. So how do we currently budget for and pay for these projects? For the courthouse and law enforcement center, historically, we funded all of those through an amount that we levied in the debt service fund and then we would transfer to the Capital Projects Fund to cover those. As we tried to spend down some cash, we stopped doing that practice. That's one of the things that I talked about earlier. We currently fund it through use of fund balance primarily from the General Revenue Fund, this year also the Solid Waste Fund. We also have that lease payment that we get from the Department of Corrections for their space. That money has historically gone into the Capital Projects Fund, and I've continued that practice because it's a nice little chunk of money that goes in there to help pay for things in that building. This building here, each of the departments and include, and the tenants all pay rent to Health and Human Services, and then Health and Human Services pays rent to the the Government Center Fund. And that pays for the maintenance of the building and pays for the long-term capital projects. The reason it all flows that way is, again, helps to build that administrative profile, increases the rates in which we get paid for things from the state. In that rent calculation that gets broken out between everyone, in twenty twenty-four, we included a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in an additional amount to go towards paying for improvements to the building. Last year, for twenty-five, we reduced that to a hundred and twelve thousand in order to stabilize, you know, our levy adjustment. So that's one of the areas that we may want to look at. Next two slides just give you a sense of some of the projects that are continuing to be out there. These were included in our, we do a three-year capital improvement plan, where we look out at the current year and the following two years of things that we anticipate coming down the road for each of the different buildings. So I'm not going to get into the detail on each of these, but just know that we do this exercise, and then it helps to then determine, are we going to have enough cash in these funds without bringing them in either through a transfer for somewhere else or through a different revenue source? And that, I'll just skip to the end of the story here, there isn't. So we'll have to continue to do these practices to bring in money to cover. We have other future needs that we're going to have to deal with that aren't currently in the three-year plan. Joel and I have talked about them, we'll start to see them in plans down the road. Windows at this building, tuck pointing at this building. We still have some older lighting in different places, so expanding LED lighting, which helps us in our energy efficiency and reduces those energy costs. And then we also have the the larger issue of our highway building and outshops that we're going to have to continue.
I thought we tuck pointed this building a few years ago.
We did some tuck pointing, but there's more that needs to get done.
Into the whole.
Yes, because of the significant cost to do it. So these are things I just want you to think about as we get into the budget process. Don't really need answers today, but, you know, should we be considering factoring in the anticipated state budget impacts in our twenty-six levy? So as we look back at that previous slide that showed kind of what I consider to be our our rock bottom numbers of what we would have to do. And that doesn't account for, you know, things that are kind of unanticipated. It puts just a generic number in there for operating increase. There may be things that we need to address that that have not been anticipated right now. But do we start to build in into that levy a higher amount to address what we know is likely going to be a larger state impact to minimize that increase down the road? Do we focus on building our fund balance, particularly in the Human Services Fund? And do we focus on developing those sustainable funding for our building maintenance projects? So what are our next?
I'd say yes, yes, and yes on all three.
Plan for the worst and and hope for the best.
And I'll I'll just add, yesterday was at AMC District Ten meeting, so it was Metro Counties, and they pretty much guaranteed a special session. There's going to be federal adjustments somewhere in the fall, if not sooner even, before fall. So, I mean, we are looking, and they're basically, Julie Ring said, you are going to see them dollars are going to get shifted to counties. I mean, they're pretty much anticipating the impact is going to get passed because we do most of the work that's going to be affected by it. So there will be just a direct move right to counties on that.
I don't think it's going to pass at all, so. I don't think they're going to pass the bill they have in front of them right now. There's a lot of different opinions on it, I tell you. We'll see.
We'll see. So that that's the thing we're worried about. The ultimately, we've we've had a really strong track record of of low and modest levy adjustments over the past ten-plus years, fifteen years. Each of, addressing each of these things ultimately will lead to a slightly higher number on top of what that would be. So the reason I bring it up is if these are challenges that we need to deal with, then that's one of the ways that we're going to have to deal with it. As we look to our our next steps, we are going to do an overview of our Health and Human Services budget and some of the challenges that they faced over the past few years and kind of how we got to the point where we're at with our fund balance there at our next work session next week. And then our departments are going to work to finalize our budgets by June twenty-seventh. We're going to have our budget committee meetings July seventh through ninth, and then August fifth. And then our appropriations request at our July work session. And we will be all back here together in August at that work session, looking at the full budget, where I'm sure you will be cheering us all on for our great work, so.
Wonderful.
Andrew, when we talk about budgets, how are we doing on the remodel project?
Yeah, we are doing very well.
Dollar-wise?
Dollar-wise, we are, we will finish within budget. I'm very confident about that.
That up to everybody.
That's so fantastic.
And I I can't, it's it's, when we look at the. And I I can't, it's it's, when we look at the construction budget, I feel very, very confident about the construction budget. When we look at the non-construction items, it's going to be very tight, but I feel confident, well, I know we are going to finish within budget there as well. I I can't give you an estimate of what I think that number is going to be under budget, but I have confidence that it will be under budget.
Because we did have a discussion about the signs we were going to put out there.
Need signs no matter what, don't we?
Once we, once we get to a little bit closer to that point, I anticipate we'll come back and have another discussion about that in the next couple of months. The one thing that's really holding us up right now is the the move of dispatch Motorola had been really, we've been really difficult to nail down a date with them. We have a firm date of when they're going to do the cutover. It's at the end of July, which is fully done with the project. They're working to move that time up if they can get the resources for it, but at the very least, we have a date. It's in July, it's not September, and there's just a couple of things that are going to be left after that dispatch move is completed, so.
So when you say Motorola, is that not a local firm that handles Motorola? This is a much bigger?
It is, it's Motorola Motorola.
Oh, it is?
Yes. Yep. There's about four firms who are working kind of in partnership on this, and getting them to all coordinate has been a challenge, and Motorola is the one who's supposed to be coordinated here. Yep.
Motorola is kind of like the railroad. It's on their timeline is how that works. The one that when we talk about finishing under budget, that contingency fund, that's where we will see what we end up under budget, is that?
Between the contingency and our general conditions, those are the two budgets that we'll we'll likely see.
The two line items.
Those are the two line items in the budget. Yep.
Okay.
Okay. That concludes my presentation.
And did you have anything to report?
Just something really brief, as I mentioned, we have a work session scheduled for next week. It's going to be really HHS-focused. We're going to talk about the budget. We're going to talk about about our partnership on with the community health service as well. They're going to be the two things that we discuss. We are closed this Thursday due to the Juneteenth holiday, and I will be out of the office on on Friday.
And it's Cory's birthday.
And it's Cory's birthday on Thursday, which is the most important thing.
Close for that.
On Thursday.
Kind of sweet. I get a paid holiday.
I may or may not have jury duty next Wednesday and Thursday.
That's so funny.
So I've never been called before, but like Darren, I got the letter saying call at this date and time, and we'll we'll see. And then the last thing I wanted feedback from everyone on that Cory thankfully reminded me on on this post-it that I keep folding up is we need to set a date for the employee picnic.
I thought of that the other day.
And typically, we do that in August, and so maybe look at your calendars kind of mid-August.
Send a doodle out.
And we'll send out a doodle to to see if there's a date that works. We don't need to do it right now. Keep that in mind, so.
I've got some firm dates that I will not be here.
Okay.
And do we want to do it like we did last year during the workday at lunchtime?
That's great. I think that would be very.
That one really, really well.
That seemed to be very popular.
Yeah.
We had good turnout.
Hunsum in August too, but that's fine. I don't have to be there.
We we will find a date that all five of you.
Sure. Good.
Okay, that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me.
Okay. Board of Commissioners Committee updates, if you don't mind, we can do them. We do have our other meetings starting at six-thirty. I would ask if we do them that we abbreviate.
Can we just do them next time?
We can do them next time, too.
I've got five pages of meetings. I went to a lot of meetings in the last couple of weeks. I want to report on everyone.
So everybody's okay with doing committee updates next time?
Correct.
I won't be here for a month, no.
Really?
Yeah, next Tuesday will be, and Andrew was there after up in Morrison County when we had our AMC district meeting. Julie, at the end of the meeting, said, I need to talk to you about going to DC.
So you won't be here for the work session either?
I won't be here Tuesday. I'll be getting back Tuesday night.
You update on that?
We'll update tomorrow.
Yeah.
So if you could put some very important things on the agenda for the two meetings he's going to meet?
Well, and it's on HHS, and that's actually what we're going to DC for, to meet with the the congressional delegation to talk again and to reiterate, number one, that if those things pass like they are, that them shifts are more than likely come to counties. And so it's a NACO flying, so they're bringing in commissioners from all over the countryside. And and so we're going to meet with Minnesota delegation there. And then also, at the same time, we're going to reiterate the going from the annual assessment on physical disabilities to making it a three-year. We want to bring that up again to see if we can alleviate some of that pressure, so. I don't know if Julie's been in touch with you yet, but she thought she had enough work or enough information, but she probably did reach out to you.
I I got an email from someone else at AMC asking for some information.
Angie or someone, but I had a feeling we were going to get put some things together, so.
Well, Steve, I I just think we all want to thank you for, you know, you're taking away from your life here in Minnesota to go and fight for the issues that are important to everybody in Minnesota and especially in Meker County, so I did a gratitude. Thank you.
I didn't know I was going to be doing quite this much, but that's it's working out. And to be honest, I don't think AMC thought we were going to be this deep into things either, so.
The the, if I may, the message I think that we all heard loud and clear last Monday was the advocacy that all of you and all the commissioners across the state have done over the past four months, five months, is the reason why the results in St. Paul were not as bad for us as we thought they were going to be. And it it goes to show that as we try to use our voice, it does get heard. So thank you all for your support and all.
I would say to that, it just like, again, last night's report to the city of Dassel was like, well, what are we going to do to get the bu- budgets down? You know, what are the what are the councils doing to keep the budgets low? And I said, you know what? One of the big things we all went, we were very active in advocating for the counties on the state level. And we really saw some success in that, we think. And they were like, oh, because it's not just our level. There's a lot more to it.
That one, the one day when they called us in on short notice to go down, and and it was the same day that the the timing was perfect, because the governor, they released them global budget targets between the three legislative branches, and they, you know, they were beating on the wall of the governor's office during that press conference, and we were down there at the same time, and there was about sixty commissioners down there, and we were in front of the House and Senate chamber, just pulling over whoever we could and talking to people, and that had a big impact as to how things went. Just a quick note, because I won't be here for a while. Yesterday, I went to AMC to the district meeting, ten, which is a metro county, is in Newport and Washington County. That first hour of that meeting was an emotional experience, because you have members in that in that room yesterday that had served with the Hortmans and the Hoffmans when they're in the legislature, and and also members that served on the committee. So they knew both the victims and the perpetrator and sat on committees. So there was, the first hour was just talking about the events of the past weekend, and so there was a lot of emotion in that room yesterday.
It was.
Sad.
Because it was a very sad event.
So was there any other business to come before us tonight?
Ready for that.
Hearing none, we will adjourn.